Alright. Solid to order, we reported at the design.
Yep.
Order seven oh three if we can hit a roll call.
Wonderful. So in the room here, we have Max here.
Here.
Councilmember Diane.
Here.
And Councilman Rochelle Williams.
Here.
And Councilmember Derek Cassidy Klein.
Here.
Mayor Paul Gamrat.
Here.
Online, we have Valerie Ranthaler.
Here.
And also Adam McDowell.
Here.
And if you've noticed, we've got closed captioning available this evening. So if you want to enable that on your Zoom, I believe it's down on the bottom of one of your settings where you can select that option.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. President. Having said that, get ourselves started for, we can't leave October already here workshop. So to open up, as we do, we'll look for public comment. Of course, your comments really kind of inform us on where we need to be. That being the case, we don't have anyone in the room today. But we are looking online. So if you want to raise your hands, we will be able to call on you, promote you and give you the opportunity to speak. If you are going to speak, if you can please state your name and your address, even though we may know it already for the record, and then we can. This time I'll look to the manager to see if there's anyone to.
So Kathy Boardner raised her hand and she may unmute and if she'd like to turn on her camera, please.
Let's see, I'm gonna try to turn on my camera. Okay, there we go. Good evening. My name is Kathy Boardner and I live at nineteen twenty-six Hampstead Drive. And I wanted to talk tonight about what's on the agenda for number eight. The second bullet point. Going to discuss adopting a draft occupancy permit and tenant registration ordinance at the October tenth meeting. And I'm interested in knowing how this originated. Is this something that the borough has wanted to do for a long time? Is it something that you got a complaint about? Did one of the council members suggest this or did it come from maybe code enforcers who are doing inspections? How did this originate? And I wanted to point out, the reason it caught my eye is my husband and I purchased our home in May of two thousand nineteen. And the real estate market was just recovering at that time in this region from when Amazon had been proposing their second headquarters thing and they got people all over the country all excited. Pittsburgh was one of the contenders. I don't know if any of you remember all of that. But as somebody who was looking for a home and in the market to buy a home, that had a huge impact on us because it caused prices to go sky high and we couldn't afford to buy. And it was, it took at least a year for that to die down. And something like this, having an ordinance like this that requires the seller to handle the, to get the occupancy permit is something that, you know, I think it could create more problems than it solves. And I would be interested in hearing what problems you think that it's going to solve. In our case, we purchased a home as is. And we purchased it from the family, the adult children of a couple that had passed away the previous year. And they didn't want to make a lot of repairs and we understood that. We have a lot of experience in renovating buildings. And we would have preferred to have, for us to do anything that was required instead of the seller. And I think that you should leave it up to the buyer and the seller to negotiate on who's going to make the necessary repairs in order for the occupancy permit to be issued. And in our case, they did a couple of things because the inspection pointed those out. And we would have done them differently. But there were other things that they didn't do that when it came time for the occupancy thing, we did and we did it the way we wanted it. So that's my thoughts and I hope you'll address the questions that are raised in my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, for your comments slash question. I think getting a bit of time where we can kind of address it quickly if you want to.
Sure. So I'll, I'll jump in. This is something that has, has been ongoing. Occupancy inspections are something the borough is already doing per the requirements of Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code and Property Maintenance Code. However, it hadn't officially been codified in our borough code. So we're basically just spelling out exactly what the process is and what we're doing. And you know, the inspections are required for the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code for, for health and life safety. So this is to make sure that someone can't move into a house where, you know, there's fire hazards, other types of issues, and those are the kind of things that do have to be handled before occupancy is issued. It does not, however, necessarily specify on which side of a transaction that has to happen. And there are, you know, ways for temporary certificates or access so that people can make repairs prior to moving in. But this really has to do with when somebody's going to move into the property and making sure it's safe.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the explanation. Moving forward, any other challenges to be promoted? Looking for the manager. Give it extra second so we can do that. Okay, that closes out public comment. Thank you for, for your comment. I hope you're able to adjust appropriately. That being the case, we can move forward on the agenda onto what is the green, which reports just received. Minutes. I don't know if anybody had any questions on minutes. Not seeing any there. Let's jump into any agency reports, questions to go. Some of them kind of still come through at this time. But I don't know if there have been any questions, comments, any comments from those who are contractor gateway or engineer.
I have a question. So today I received an email from some residents that live on Marlboro Road asking about some saw cutting that's going on along the street. I wanted to see if you can kind of explain what that process is, what's going on. So that way residents can be educated about the paving project and process.
Sure. So during the paving and if, I, I know that we were actually out there at the same time. After they mailed off the street, there was a concrete sub base under the street. That concrete sub base does have joints. So after they performed the paving on top of that concrete sub base, those concrete, concrete sections could potentially move. So the saw cutting is essentially at those joints where the concrete joints previously existed. And that's just allowing the asphalt at the top a little bit more flexibility. So that the cracks don't permeate up to the top. So they'll saw cut, they'll go through and they'll saw cut at each one of those joints. And then they'll fill that back up with like a joint filler ceiling. So then it's sealed again at that point, but it does help the longevity of the crack from, from occurring longer.
And that typically the process that we lay the asphalt down, you know, and then go back and put in the concrete joints.
So yeah, the, the sub base concrete joints are there. This is the, the process for saw cutting through the top of the asphalt. That way that asphalt kind of mimics the underneath sub base of the concrete. So it is always the last thing that will occur. Part of it too, and I, I drove through even just tonight to see what it looked like after the fact. They'll come through and they'll clean it up too, just because there is a lot of mess that occurs whenever they're first.
Just there a little bit. At Apple, it's going very well. The same explosion, because of those concrete slabs, they did cut across there. They stick a styrofoam joint in there first.
First. Like a sick of like.
Yeah. It was a mess for quite a while. You think water will wash it off very well. It takes a while. Eventually, it washes away. It's not such an unsightly thing.
So I'd like to follow up on Brooke's question because I got a couple outreaches from the street in the future. Let's make sure we communicate what we're doing because I think a lot of residents made the assumption, once it signs went down with parking and the paving was there and it was all done. The next thing you know, this dust maker comes down the road. He's cutting the beautiful new asphalt. Some of them were like, what are you doing? Are you, are you taking it back up again? And it created a little bit of, they were unnerved, a few of them. And so they did call with that concern. I thought that was something we can do better as we communicate through the process. So they understand that even after the paving gets rolled nice and smooth, there's a step of the saw cutting and joints and then also some sealing of the joints where the paving layers kind of come together and we'd expect that as well.
And is that something that we do, that we can do via kind of citizen like?
Yeah, I'm sure we could do better.
Like that way to make sure it's communicated. And can we, for, I'm not, I'm not sure who can answer this or that. So can we target that city citizen at that point to just up lock then?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that, that to me makes a lot of.
Considering, hopefully, there's a number of residents who are subscribed to that. We can isolate an announcement to a specific area.
They also, Marbury, I believe, has their own website.
Their website is a Facebook page.
Right. So maybe that would be, although this is specific to Marbury, that would have been a good idea just to send it right to them.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, most of the, you know, school roads are.
Yeah. Not, not my favorite thing to, to know, right?
Yeah, I still get that when the contractors come down and work on someone's travel. And they're mauling up the road with their, their vehicle. What are you doing on the road?
Don't get me started.
I just didn't know if you were laying the asphalt, if you put, to put joints in and then load the asphalt. I didn't realize that it was loading the asphalt first and then you put the joints. And so understanding that process, I think it's helpful for everyone to be able to follow the process and not be flustered when they see that something's happening. And then I guess my next question is initially, we had estimated the project to be around four hundred thousand, what is it, four hundred and twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars and some change. Where are we at currently?
Currently, we did just issue the first application because everything except for saw cut and sealing essentially, which. So that, that was about three hundred and three thousand dollars. So that, that's where we kind of stand right now. It is expected to be somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, I'm just speaking off the top of my head, but with retainage and saw cutting. But we, we are expecting to be under, under budget.
You enjoy under budget.
Yes.
Does, does make life a little easier. Well, also a great question, something that I think not just from Marbury, but community wise, it's really helpful. Thank you for answers and for questions.
And while we're talking about reports in the binder and just want to call out we did do our municipal minimum obligation or minimum municipal obligation, MMOs. What the state requires us to do is acknowledge that we will be budgeting for those amounts next year. We don't have to be a distressed pension, but because some pensions are distressed, they want to make sure municipalities acknowledge that, hey, in your budget, next year, your obligation will be X. We get that letter in September and those are in your binder if you want to take a look at those. For those who've been around a while, they have been decreasing as our pensions have remained and increased in their health.
Very happy with where our pensions are. I'm almost, almost slightly too happy, if that makes sense.
Don't look at the market.
That's why, that's why I'm not, you know, I'm not going to consider that possibility of what the future goes to. So I need to be a little bit more, a little less happy than I am, but right now I'm, I'm still, I'm still pretty happy. Anything else on subject of any agency reports, any comments from folks?
I have another comment pertaining to the manager's secretary report. There was some mention of an application that was submitted for the playground and also proper field. And when I initially looked at the application, I didn't see really any detail about the on the length of census for that. And I was wanting to come in and just speak to what the maintenance is going to be projected at.
I don't think, so to see, I don't think you can project the maintenance until you have kind of a plan of what it's going to be, to, to be quite frank. And so being at the beginning stages of this and looking at not even having a secured location, really. I think when we get a little closer, we'll have a better understanding. However, I do think that there is funding available both from the county and from the state to help address any ongoing maintenance. But I think it's very difficult to give a kind of maintenance space right now because we don't have a master plan. We don't have a direct location. We don't have a drainage situation. We don't have, so it's a little premature, I think, right now to have a firm headboard back.
Sure. But we have committed ourselves to contributing, I think, four hundred thousand dollars towards the building and.
And again, I think in, in that we're looking at not having it come out of the borough pocket, but having that come out of county and other funding. One of the great things about dealing with the kind of program that we're looking at, particularly that we're looking at something at playground for children with disabilities, is something that opens itself up to allow for not just the state funding that's coming through already, but the county funding that has come through and very frankly, foundation funding. It's, it's a really kind of open space that will, that will attract beyond even our Churchill residents. You know, with things like development that we continually try to address, having something, something like this in Churchill also kind of looks at some of that. In fact, the currents, not to get too off topic, but the, the current potential owner, I hate doing that because lord knows where these things go with that. You know, in trying to look at residential development, you know, they're offering, hey, what if we put it over by our stuff and give you the land that we're there? So there's a lot of moving pieces to do something like this on a project of this large of this capacity. But I think that as we move forward, it becomes more concrete. We'll find ourselves in a position that we are able to fund ongoing expenses outside of borough expense using county and state money.
And when will we expect to hear? Obviously we have to wait to have the application reviewed and then decided upon, but when will we hear? It's about the conversation with location and the logistics.
So I think realistically, and we've been in talks with Jay Costa and others about this application long before the application. Because the, for the funding for this actually comes from the Westinghouse site initially that was sitting on that site and was unused because of everything that's happened at the site. So the multimodal and talking with Jay, rather than have that flow out of Churchill, we were looking for a way to use it inside of Churchill. So I think, you know, once, and I don't know the exact timeline for the multimodal funds being transferred. But I think once we have that, I think we'll come back to the table and have a much more realistic conversation about that. Anything else on it? Any else on general reports?
I had a question on the, I saw something for the library in the binder. Is that a funding request? Do we normally do stuff on, on finance committee? Does anyone know kind of what that is or what we typically do?
So the library did this year, put together more information related to their request. And I think they would welcome opportunities to talk to the finance committee to do a little more detail. The long and short of it is, library funding in Pennsylvania is tied to local commitments. And it's the same with the Rad. They, they kind of say, you know, if you really want this locally, then you'll show it with your money and then we'll match more to it. So it's kind of an interesting thing that's played. So what they did was they provided us some information and compared up the capital contributions to others around the county and then some other things they, they would kind of project. So I think the number they had, it was like fourteen thousand, three hundred. And I think when I arrived here in twenty nineteen, we're around three thousand contribution. And the two budgets I've been a part of, we moved that out. Maybe we'll propose we move that up a little more, not to fourteen thousand, three hundred. That might be the long range goal to creep up to that number. But it's just a matter of helping them then unlock resources. Again, it's just the way the system works, but I think it's something we got a lot more conversations on, certainly what the finance committee is doing this month. Adam's online is meet each Friday throughout since October. And Adam, make sure that we talk more in detail about not only that contribution, the borough contributes to the volunteer fire company, to the Woodland Hills ambulance service, to the library, and then we have obligations related to the COGS, the one that does the land bank as well as the Turner Creek Valley Co. So there's a section of the budget, quite frankly, in total, it's a small portion of our budget, but something that, you know, we need to get a handle on where our long range is, like where we think we ought to be, whether that's higher or lower, or why do we do them?
Yeah. And I didn't dig into the library. So it begs the question that I kind of beg every year. So I don't know if we have a new, a new answer to this or not. Do we have our, our usage, not our local per capita contributions? But what kind of, what the number of Churchill residents that are using that library are?
So I think it's, yeah, when we met with Aaron, who's the director at the library, Michelle and I, those are some of the questions we asked and, you know, to help clarify our usage. The exciting thing is because of the branch over in Forest Hills at the Borough Building, it's been pretty positive. The challenge for them is if you know anything about libraries, the e-circulation, the, the Libby, the online stuff is going through the roof in the county. And I don't think it's just isolate the Algeny County's doing a poor job of isolating the exact library that's coming from. They're sort of like, so it's hard to tell me then there's the circulation that happens physically through the branch and the main, you know, defenders that because we're Churchill members, we're providing the online materials.
So were they, were they, not, not to kind of repeat the question, but were they able to answer?
Yes. Yeah.
I think, I think it was fourteen percent of residents had library cards is what that.
But our, as you might expect, our, our borough does well per capita. We use libraries.
Right. Yeah. And I'm not surprised by that at all. I have library card used to use that library particular, but I just, just wanted to kind of put that out there.
The, the footprint of the library is not the school district. It's kind of interesting. I think Swissville has an old school district building is their library. So it's kind of, I was, it was something I learned because I was trying to figure this out, what their territory is. So don't think of it as kind of mirroring the thirteen municipalities that the district has. It's small.
Yeah. Excellent. Anything else, folks?
I see the Wilkinsburg ten building water. Acknowledged on the agenda, but I didn't receive any kind of report. Is there any update as to what is going on? I know back in July and August, we voted to extend the life of the authority and they also recently obtained additional bond. And so is there any talk about any updates or plans that they have?
The, a representative was unable to make the meeting this month. As a teacher, open house at the beginning of the school year. And he promised he would get us some things before the next meeting, but I don't think he kind of get a lot of details on both of those items though. The extending of the authority is pretty perfunctory and knowing the authority, they're just moving on. We ought to get more information about the improvements, but my understanding is really none of the improvements are designated towards this because there are a lot of those are focused where the lead pipe removal and we happen to be newer and therefore minimal, if any, lead pipes remaining for us to do it. I think they did have one that they did recently, what I mean recently, last couple of years. But my understanding is that this large bond that they have is for their, their legacy of lead pipe and all their service area.
I guess my question stems from, as we all have seen in these different water authorities experiencing crises related to their infrastructure. And so because there was discussion about, I believe when the representative attended one of our meetings, that there were plans to do some updates, but it was not specified exactly what. And so we might as to know.
Yeah, I won't step on Matt's toes because he might have some observations, but when we, Matt and I toured the facility recently and if you recall, they were bulk sellers to my Red Bull and Plum who are now buying a lot of bulk off the municipal authority of Westmore County. And what that means is they've got a lot of capacity and are pretty well serviced if they had a crisis. They showed us pictures from the nineteen thirty-seven, thirty-six flood that happened down in the Algeny. And the way their facility was, because we, you know, you think about these things, when we saw what happened in Jackson, Mississippi, you think, well, how could that happen here? And what would that look like? Seeing those pictures and kind of seeing where they're at and how high they are in relation to that, that flood event that happened way back when, before some of these dams were built in the, in the watershed. I felt pretty good about that, but I felt good that not only that, the interconnections they're making, both with the municipal authority of Westmore County, but then also towards the Pittsburgh side. So they have a reservoir and they pump into that reservoir mounts that even if power went down, which they also talked about investments, they're making power recovery. I, I felt good because some of those things were, I think we're in good position. It goes to be improved.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think the authority's been, since the new director took over about two years ago and, and there was some change there. Working on a lot of different projects. I know the online billing was something that's, you know, been rolled out in the last year or two that was not available before and they're working on other upgrades for, you know, customer access, smart metering eventually in the future. So a lot of different things they're working on, talking about, but I don't know that there's concrete plans for anything we can announce tomorrow.
Well, I'm not looking for an announcement tomorrow, but I'm just looking for a consistent update. So that way we can be informed and understand what's happening. So thank you for that.
Yeah, Bill, Bill, our representative has tried real hard to work with us and he's opened up some nice, Bill Coles, William Coles, some nice avenues of communication because we're concerned, you know, I don't know if you guys knew this, they, they like access the remittance of, of our sewage collections, both that we need to give to Alka Sand and ours. And it's just a lump sum, you know, like how many customers, how much water do they buy? What's that based on? They're working on it and I trust the new regime will be giving some of that data that the borough is kind of trying to be clear on what we expect when it comes to the money that our residents pay, they bill, that comes back to us. We'd like more detail on that. I, I trust Bill and the new leadership term is going to be, I'm unable to need some of that, but I, I like what you're saying, but we've got to keep continuing to work with them to get better reporting and more information.
That's a very wonderful article. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Moving forward then, Act fifty-seven. I will jump to this guy here.
Sure. So this is a legislation that was passed, signed, I think, over the summer. And it's pretty straightforward. What, what it is, is that if you buy a new property and you don't receive a tax bill, historically, the answer has been, well, too bad. You should have known you, you had to pay real estate taxes and you get charged penalties and interest. Starting in twenty twenty-three, all municipalities and school districts have to pass an ordinance or resolution ordinance if you're a municipality to essentially address that circumstance and provide specifically that in such a case, the person who purchased the property presents a request for a waiver. The tax collector processes it, confirms that they meet the criteria and then they pay the the face amount of the tax, no penalties and interest or leas or charge. So everyone's essentially passing this form of the same ordinance or resolution. So we'll be asking for a motion advertised next week and then we'll have it set up for adoption in November.
Questions? Pretty, pretty straightforward, yeah? All right. Let's jump on to budget questions. Open it up. Anyone? Adam, you want, you want to lead?
Yeah. So let me just jump in here real quick on the budget. So I do have to amend our discussion from last month where we were we mentioned trying to fast track this a little bit this year. It's not going to happen. So we're going to be more on a regular schedule with the budget, which will be in November, we will have the draft budget ready for everyone to review, for it to be advertised to the public and we'll vote on it in December. As Alex mentioned earlier, this month, the finance committee is going to be meeting every Friday to go over the numbers. So we're still compiling those. We're looking forward to receiving those. We'll have our first meeting with actual numbers this Friday, hopefully, and then we'll, we will have the budget for you next month. So any questions on any of that?
Not on that. Just happy that you're, you're here. The, the wonderful news and lack of sleep that comes with it. So. Those were both of you. So staring to my, my camera, right? Any questions from, from other folks? Alrighty. Still haven't addressed on public safety. That's what we still. Infrastructure. I think about eighteen bullets.
About eighteen bullets.
It's got.
So let's see, first bullet here is just about any discussion about the advertisement for the building renovations. That's the ADA bathrooms and female locker room. I know we'd already talked about, but we got the CDBG grant for sixty thousand towards that project. I know we'd already talked about, but we got the CDBG grant for sixty thousand towards that project. And we're, it, I think in the process, the committee has, you know, fully reviewed the drawings and bid specifications. We're recommending to council that that's ready to bid, uh, once I believe the, um. Turtle Creek cog needs to be involved with the bidding of that because they're actually the recipient of the grant technically through the state. So. Alex would be coordinating with Rebecca on that and, uh, kind of, or excuse me, Amanda, pardon me. Uh, and as soon as they're ready, then, uh, we'll be ready to advertise that work. So we're, we'd hope to, uh, I think have that done this month, but it may push, push a month with that coordination with the cog. Um, next one is the occupancy ordinance. I think we touched on that last week and a little bit with, uh, some of the comments today. So. Unless there's any questions specifically.
I, I just think it's good to stress, it's, we're just trying to, like you said, codify. The practice that's been done here for a very long time. So there's really nothing new and it's about the health and safety. Make sure that the. The transfer of homes need basic health and safety needs and. I, I don't think any buyer or that matter seller, but the buyer should assume they still shouldn't get an inspection. Um, you know, at the end of the day, it's the biggest investment anyone will ever make. And this is a cursory kind of, um, almost a windshield survey inspection. It's not going to test every outlet. It's not going to test every window. It's not going to test every. Pipe and valve. That's something, you know, the buyer should with their personal inspector and. And if they're, you made the repairs, you know, go ahead and do it or negotiate a better price on the sale. Uh, we're just trying to get the high level smoke detectors, carbon dioxide. And, and you would not believe what people do over time when they, they kind of do it yourself. We've seen some interesting things, uh, the installation of, uh, that somebody added an extra furnace. Because they had an addition to their house and they put it in a place that's not venting properly and it's creating that again. A health and safety hazard and we've caught some interesting things from the years ago. What this is, is just kind of codifying what the practice is. I'm with Gavin, if you want to add to that at all.
The, the only thing I'd mention is I, I don't know how, uh, how carefully monitored the, uh, rental occupancy has been. Historically, I think that may be a new program. So I wanted to point that out that, that rental properties will be required to register tenants. Um, so again, that's, that's, that's going to start fresh with this ordinance. Um, great points about. Reminding people they really should get their own, own home inspection. Um, the other thing is there's really a couple of codes that are going to be enforced and. When I say enforced, it's going to be easily observable sort of. Problems as you, as you point out, I'm almost, I don't want to say cursory because that, that may be giving a too short shrift, but. You know, it's, it's not going to be an in-depth inspection, but. Uh, one of the things that I know, uh, Matt, you want to bring this up was the codes that we're enforcing. We want to, I think, update in the, in the very near future because you have the Uniform Construction Code, right? That's, that's a state statute. That automatically updates itself. Really every roughly three years or so, and that includes things like the International Residential Code, the International Building Code. Certain, uh, certain portions of the fire code, uh, some other things like that, electrical. Uh, but the Property Maintenance Code, which the, which the, uh, Borough Council adopted back in twenty twelve or ish. Twenty, twenty fourteen adopted the twenty twelve version and there have been, uh, a few different versions since then. Every three years, the code council puts out a new version. So I know we talked with Matt and the Infrastructure Committee about suggesting the council that, that we update that to the twenty eighteen. Uh, International Property Maintenance Code and we would need to do that by ordinance, but these sort of, these things will sort of work in tandem so that. So that when these inspections are done, as long as we update that to the twenty eighteen ordinance. Those will be the regulations that this is inspected against as well as the Uniform Construction Code requirement. So. Again, we'll be asking, I think, for a motion to advertise or to prepare, I should say, right? A twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code to present at the November meeting.
Correct. Next up on the list is the draft five G ordinance. Uh, so this is the distributed small cell, um. You know, fifth generation wireless facility ordinance that's been in the binders. Uh, the committee did, you know, meet a few times on this one because it's a pretty large ordinance and we had a bunch of stuff to pick through. The draft that's in the binder, there's two or three little clarifications we're waiting on from our, um. Special counsel consultant on that, but they're basically text changes or minor at this point. One was whether or not we're allowed to increase a bond, you know, construction bonding, um, and one or two other. To, you know, uh, text changes. If any of that was impactful, we'll make sure we get, you know, a new draft out and, and alert everyone otherwise. Uh, you know, that'll be the, the final draft of that and we'll be looking to advertise that.
Fair enough. One, one that's been being pushed for a while, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd just like to emphasize that, uh, this is really important. And it's really going to have a long-term effect on the community. And I know it's huge and I know that it's complicated. But to the extent that you can wade your way through it, I think it's really important for council members to know what it says. There's been a lot of work on it, but I, I, I would feel. Comfortable if I knew that everybody had, had really tried to process that.
It's been an important one, everyone that's had some time on it.
Yeah.
So if I could comment on this too, and this might be something worth, uh, talking, are you working with Joel Winston at, at Cohen's office? Um, so I've, I've had this conversation with Joel and a couple of other communities, um, and I think this is something worth. Counsel's consideration. I see the way this is set up is that the, the definitions are all going into chapter three oh four, which is the zoning code. But then instead of putting these regulations regarding kind of how and where wireless communications facilities are permitted. Looks like there's a new chapter thir- three hundred that's being created. And my recommendation has been, and I know Cohen has done in both ways, but my recommendation has been to. To put these regulations in the zoning code as well. Um, you know, I think that that's. That's appropriate. If you're going to define these things in the zoning code. It would make sense that the regulations themselves are in the zoning code. It does deal with the use of property. And so that, that would be my recommendation. It's not. Necessarily right or wrong to do it one way or the other, but you know, I just think it's, to me, it's, it's, it's zoning and, and if you're going to put. For instance, I would expect that the five G or the five G with the towers, the cell towers are going to be conditional uses.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And so if it's a conditional use, those regulations really should be in a zoning code because that's where. That, I mean, those are zoning regulations. So just something to, to, to talk to Joel about, and I have talked to him about it and I think, you know, if he. They're willing to do it either way, that, that I think to me it makes more sense than.
Excellent.
So I'm glad the five G ordinance has been on the books for quite some time. I guess my question is. Where is the motivation for this ordinance coming from? Is it something that is. Safe regulated? Is it something that we were, um, approached by?
No, so, so it's federally regulated and, and they, uh, the feds actually passed the law already. So. Right now we're in a, a situation where, you know, Verizon or one of these other companies could come in and. Basically say, hey, we want to put in five G equipment. We're going to put it all over here, here and here, and we don't have any way to say yes or no.
Okay.
So they, the fed, the feds updated the law, they changed it and said, hey, you, you have to give them access. So this is reactionary and, and Cohen is specifically, you know, law group is. Helped work with, um, you know, with the feds and writing that law and the state and, and how that's being enacted and then helping local. Um, municipalities and governments, you know, um, put as much control on that process without violating. Any of the specific federal and state laws. So.
Thank you for it.
Yeah, and, and the reason it's taken some time is because that, they were working with the state in enacting some of that federal, you know, um. Federal laws and how, you know, how they got done through the state as well.
Yes, sir. If we don't pass the ordinance, you know, any bit of the small window of control or a little bit of control that the federal.
Right.
They preempt this in this area, um, they regulate this industry and they're giving us a little bound. To, to, to be a part of. My thing with Diana saying is, is, is you begin to look at these. As they begin to grow, they will become a part of our landscape and, and to the degree we can maybe aesthetically. Make them less intrusive. That's what we're trying to do, but we don't have a wide range. We can't stop them. We can't say we're a five G free municipality. This ordinance isn't designed for that, but the ordinance can help us maybe.
Have a little bit of control over.
Something.
Yeah, in fact, aesthetics was our, one of our biggest concern.
And, and I think there's, there's a reason for that, for that limitation in terms of. The, the real technology of this, it, it is going to be, you know, uh, ubiquitous and. Whatever we can do to not make it look like, you know. Like we're, like we're a giant transistor of pop, 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 you know. Uh, wherever we can put any controls on it is, is a win. So it's appreciated that. I agree with Diane. She's everything particularly. Anything else on it?
Nope.
Ready? But wait.
But wait, there's more. So, uh, the next, I mean, the next thing is just the, uh, intersection there, uh, at William Penn Highway. Um, and this is the. Penn Dot project, you know, they're, they're redoing twenty-two William Penn Highway through there and up through the intersection in Nottingham. So. Um, you know, part of this is the updated bus stops and curb ramps that they're going to be putting in. And, uh, because we own a little bit of that infrastructure, there's a, a cost sharing. That, um, you know, they expect us to buy into or, or be part of if we want that infrastructure update. Um, so for the ADA ramps and all that other good stuff they're going to be putting in. Basically the total estimated cost is seventeen thousand dollars and then, you know, the borough. Uh, is only responsible for twenty-five hundred about on that project. Last, uh, we did check and on the plans, I mean, they don't have any bus shelters shown. So it's going to be, you know, outdoor bus stops like that are there now, but. Um, better accessibility, they're moving the one from the opposite side of the highway. Uh, to, you know, better location on the Nottingham side.
Safety.
Yeah.
Trying not to have people missing their, their life.
Right. So they'll have the coordinated, you know, crosswalks and it, it'll be an upgrade for certain, um, you know, probably well needed over there.
Why not a shelter?
It's something you can ask for, for authority. I'm, I'm not saying like just regional transit, the RT.
Yes.
May not be amenable to, but the reasoning it's being moved is because the comprehensive plan that was passed.
Right.
With Wilkins and Monroeville recommended that. So when it was scoped, we shared that with them. Um, but I think. It is not bad for us to ask. There might be a larger cost share for that. Um, but we also might want to find a way to get that working. And when we look at doing our active transportation plan. Which we've gotten a partial funding for, but I think we're going to be able to afford one way or the other because it's a forty-three thousand dollar plan and we've gotten thirty-one thousand of it. Um, it will be identifying those kind of needs and, you know, if you know anything, really the, the. Real grants aren't the planning grants, it's the implementation grants. So I'm hoping if we can't get it through the ASPS right up. That our active transportation plan really goes hard at identifying those mobility limitations as it relates to. You're getting on the bus and getting off the bus and safe.
I have my favorite. Right across here.
We have one.
What we went through after the fact to try to get a shelter here. Was unbelievable and the advice at the time was. Get the shelter when the work, the re, the other work is done. So I'm, I'm going to be pushing hard. Uh, and in addition to that, in terms of funding. There are also companies that put up those shelters in exchange for advertising.
I would just point out to our, uh, PRT friends. That when they built our wonderful shelter and when they came back and created the curb cuts that are, that are obligated. That they created curb cuts to no sidewalk.
Exactly.
So I'm still not sure how they're meeting their, their ADA obligations, right? And having curb cuts that go into grass. So it's a, it's a conversation to be, to be had.
Yes, it is.
And one that if they can properly and create safer spaces, that's another one of those questionable.
Right.
Access points.
Right.
So.
We still have the, uh, westbound to deal with, but that's not in the cards right now. The other thing I learned from reading the. Um, the specifications is because Road Eye Road meets, uh, business twenty-two. And they are both state roads. We're not responsible for the ramps. Over there, we're only responsible for the ramps at Nottingham. So that's a good thing.
Anything else on that?
So as far as the resolution is concerned, I saw in the actual resolution that there are options that we can choose. I know the amount is. Is not worth two thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. But is that recommendation for how we're going to pay for our contribution? Is that something that will be given to the finance committee? Or something that the president will decide and who will decide how that resolution is?
Yeah, it would be paid out of our.
It's out of our, yeah.
The interesting thing is I was talking to Dennis about this, saying we signed one of these eighteen months ago, twenty months ago with Penn Dot on the local roads. For the William Penn repaving. I haven't got invoiced for that yet. So it's a little bit challenging sometimes to get. Penn Dot to give you an invoice or budget some of those. They do these last, which is kind of exasperating. So it would come out of the general fund or the capital reserve budget, um. And we'll make sure as we get into the details like the finance committee that's identified that. Of course, this is just now. Coming into approval by council and it's up to the finance committee to find then kind of where you want to have it placed best. Whether you do it as a capital project. Or, you know, out of the general fund, but I imagine the capital project item, it is certainly long enough in its extent. But, but the interesting thing is when will we get invoiced? It could be next year, it could be twenty twenty-four, one.
I think Brooks is talking about too, the, you know, when we pass the resolution that you're supposed to check a box. You know, are you going to pay within thirty days of receiving the invoice? Are you just going to have to take out the liquid fuels?
Yeah, no, yeah. So definitely doesn't come out of liquid fuels. It will definitely be the invoice after the.
Actually, within thirty days, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, we, the liquid fuels go entirely to the heavy program and it's just simpler from an audit standpoint to keep that clean. And not kind of muddy the waters with a, a secondary project or a side project, even though it is a Penn Dot one. It may make a problem in the auditors.
So I, I want to jump back, um, so I realize that you said, even though everyone got the, an email from me from management and. Government committee about the relationship with Wilkins with respect to the ongoing or what was ongoing. Uh, police murder conversation, uh, that Wilkins had determined terminates. Uh, that negotiation. Uh, I, I will simply say that, uh, I'm very disappointed. With their decision. I am even more disappointed with the way in which they conducted themselves for that decision. Um, you know. I would expect that if we have a negotiating team and they have a negotiating team, that they have the, uh. Courage. If they don't want to go through something to step forward and explain themselves. Uh, but that just wasn't the case. And so, uh, at this time, uh, that potential merger of police force is not going to happen. Uh, you guys have, you know, individually heard my kind of thought on this. Uh, that I wanted to realize that I, I said it out, then it kind of slipped off and, and here it is. So that's where we are with that. And, uh, one more thing to, to work on.
Um, I, I would just say that I, uh, I think that, um. We hope that future councils commissioners are able to work through this. Because the merger, and it's not a merger, it's creation of a new police department under a commission. Um, I certainly hope that at some future point we can revisit this.
Yeah, it was, there was an opportunity.
There was.
Right, for us to move kind of policing in a different direction. Uh, to look at it through the, the lens of regionalizing to be progressive departments, back to how. Regional policing can be, community policing, the, you know, all of those things. Uh, to know. Some people aren't always ready for that.
True, right.
And, uh, you know, as it turns out, we thought they were and we will know. If I keep going, I'll keep going.
Nicely said.
I will stop myself there.
But I do want to thank you and Diane and Alex. We all know how hard you worked on this. And how many months and months of meetings and what have you.
Thank you.
And we, we all appreciate it. It's a shame it happened the way it did. Um. And I thought it was a win-win for both communities. It should have been a win-win and it ended up. They saw things differently and like you said, maybe it will be revisited, but we all have to just move on. But I thank all three of you for your hard work.
And the mayor as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. Yes, of course, of course.
I hope it doesn't take seven months, then it's time to find out whether or not it's going to work.
Right, right. But I think sometimes.
You keep, you keep.
No, but I think sometimes people don't realize what is involved, even when the decision doesn't go our way. How much work that was involved by all four of you.
You know, yeah.
Yeah.
It would be great if, if there's a fundamental difference of philosophy.
Right.
You know, and you come to the table and you say, here's where we're at.
From the beginning.
Right.
Right.
That, that could be disclosed on all sides, but unfortunately this, you know, one of those things. And, uh, we will. we will move on.
Right.
Yes.
So it almost like it should, should have been reversed and that should have been talked about first.
So.
We tried to have a mission, vision, value discussion at the beginning because we really feel strongly that that was, it wasn't about cost savings.
Yeah.
It was about doing better and having a vision for where we wanted that mid police force to be.
Right.
And I swear they were, they had claimed they were with us.
Oh, they did. Yes.
Um.
Yes.
You know, the thing to me, change is hard. Right?
Yes, it is.
You know, sometimes to get to where you want to go, it requires, you know, new people, new faces and new thinking. And that can be very challenging.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so, you know, unfortunately in our, in our situation, this is one where the changes that I think Churchill was looking for, uh, were the ones that required some new thinking.
Right.
And that was just a really hard space to get at when it comes to. And I think that unfortunately, when you ask that of people, sometimes, you know, they can't understand what you're saying. They can't read it properly.
Mm-hmm.
And I think they, they may have misread what change means. Uh, and so their interpretation brought them to one place and us to another place.
Right.
Unfortunately, we reached the end pass. I keep trying. So, um, yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to, I appreciate it. Want to, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that up. So anything else, um, any comments on that? Anything else that you want to discuss on that?
Yeah. I just think the next time we discuss the merger that you think the technical reasons, I don't know, or previous one was a powerful had discussed towards two, we believe all are very close, um, in relationship and also in support, uh, our office of support for TIL and our three programs. And so to lead a real regional effort, I feel like, um, it's an opportunity to bring multiple municipalities to the same.
You know, you know, just so you know that that was discussed actually.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there's a lot of factors that go into what, what makes a proper dance partner. And, you know, unfortunately, and, and this goes back several years. It was first, we talked about even larger regionalization. Uh, and so we went to meetings with Forest Hills, Wilkins, Rankin, like it was a really large one. And then that broke to, well, let's take a look at who's, who's a better dance partner and a better fit for Churchill. And at that point, looking at kind of where we were, how our police officers are paid, who's full-time, do we have part-time, what's our pensions look like? It got down to, we have one good dance partner. And the conversation really became in terms of to that point, even in our conversation with Wilkins, was so this is our fit now. And then maybe in the future, we can look at what it would look like past that. But right now, what made the most sense for Churchill and for Wilkins, if we were going to move forward, would have been that kind of one-to-one merger where we could identify right away from it. This is how it is. We weren't, you know, neither party was saying that, you know, we would never expand. I think our position, you know, not to get too much into the weeds of the negotiation that was happening, but generally our position was, listen, our folks, right? We're not jumping at the idea of going to a large regional policing without understanding what that means with each of the forces, their training, their capacity, either, you know. So we can start here. And then we'll leave it up to the commission because the way that it was set up, there would have be a separate commission that had oversight. They would make decisions on expansion. Right? And so how that expansion took place, what that meant, what, what was, there was financial considerations and other consideration. Uh, but it was definitely something that was discussed before. We ended up in a kind of just us and Wilkins and during our negotiation process in terms of looking forward. So, uh, but a good, but a good point. Right? So, uh, anything else on, on the table? Alrighty, um, with nothing else here then, uh, we are going to be able to adjourn, uh, unless there's something else on the general comment. I, I miss me the case.
Climate action.
I miss the whole page. That's what I'm saying. So. I, I got, I got things up my mind. Let's go forward to, uh, climate action.
Communication. And you're communicating.
Jay, are you trying to skip me?
You know, I figured you need the, the rest. You, you don't have much sleep right now. I realize you're a warrior, so I'm not, I'm not really going to put it to that way. So floor, floor is yours.
Thanks. Yeah, I have not slept, but that is okay. Trucking through here. Um, we did not meet last month. Um, we are meeting in two weeks, um, for communication. Um, uh, the fall newsletter draft went out today for council members. So when you get a chance, please take a look at that. Um, so that can go out and be published. Um, sorry, my baby screaming in the background. Uh, of one of the last, I think two meetings ago, Brooke, you had, we had, you had brought up, um, using Savvy Citizen um, to push some, uh, garage sales and things like that. We discussed that internally um, as council members and thought that Savvy Citizen was more of a borough communicating with citizens. Um, pushing out messages instead of citizens pushing out messages through Savvy Citizen. Um, there are other tools out there where citizens can push out information themselves, like the Nextdoor app, which we thought would be a great idea if somebody does want to advertise their, um, garage sale or something like that. That's one of the things we discussed. The other thing we discussed, um, which will be discussed at the next meeting, um, was if there are block parties and things like that. We currently don't have any, um, Alex, help me here with the word, um. We don't have anything written or any policies of how that would work, like letting the police know that there's a block party, that roads need to be blocked. So that's something that we are discussing um, within the communications committee of how we're going to move forward with that and what the next steps would be. Um, and the last thing I want to talk about, which I'm going to give the floor to Deb, is, uh, celebrate Churchill Day.
Yes, celebrate Churchill Day was, went swimmingly well. Uh, we were very, very fortunate that the weather was unbelievable how the forecast was horrible the whole week, including that morning. We were all there at nine o'clock in the morning. Downpour, downpour going on. We had Plan A, B, C, and D, and the, the skies were beautiful at noon and I want to thank all our residents who came out. Um, most of the council people were there. Um, you know, sitting there at the welcome center, that was terrific. Everything just went so well. And I will say having Savvy Citizen helped a lot because we were constantly giving updates, even that day saying it's still on rain or shine because we weren't going to just, you know, if you looked at the weather forecast on Thursday or Friday, you just said, oh, you know, they're not doing this. But we kept saying, still going on, still going on. So that, I think that is a great communication tool that we didn't have years ago or even last year. Um, and also Michelle, I want to thank her for constantly updating the, uh, the website and the Facebook page. So all of that helped to, you know, get everybody here, but it was just a terrific event and we had a terrific crowd and we're looking forward that we have a meeting next Thursday to talk about hopefully the big one in next summer, bigger, bigger. Um, but I just can't say how fortunate we were with the weather and how everything worked just perfectly.
What time was it?
Um, yes, I was going to tell you that. I will, I was going to send you that. Six o'clock. The rec, the recreation board is meeting on the thirteenth at six o'clock, but I'll, I'll send you.
Oh, thanks.
About that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. So, you know, and thank you all for coming out. Really appreciate it.
Well, and thank you all to the rec board for all the hard work and, uh, all of our citizens that came out and helped the fire company, the police who are out doing traffic control on the road, parking volunteers, you know, all, all of the above.
Right. Oh, and I also want to thank Ralph because he organized all the, the firefighter volunteers, the firefighters. We had the truck there, the kids, we had terrific kids games, but they loved the fire truck the most, no question.
You don't love the fire trucks.
Bad in the ice cream truck. But yes, yes. So, uh, yeah, I want to thank Ralph because he put a lot of work in organizing them as well. So it was really terrific.
I think it's fair to say that, uh, it went very well. We're all very thankful to see the record.
Yeah, they all worked so hard.
Good. Just, just one comment about that. You know, I'm not on the record, but I, I joined most of the meetings. Yeah. That group did work really hard in a short amount of time.
They really did.
To pull it all together.
Right.
And, you know, a lot of logistics involved with that.
Mm-hmm.
Michael and Joe.
Michael and Joe.
Where they put,
Right.
They're like, they're like artists.
Right.
Especially all the, yeah.
Right.
I'm saying there are probably five hundred people or so passed.
Five or six hundred.
It was a good day.
Yes. But yeah, one more shout out to the rec board, especially Michael and Joe and everybody just, everybody had their own job to do, you know, Bonnie who, um, pet like who organized all the traffic people and what have you, and Janet organized all the volunteers. So it was really a group effort, a big group effort. So.
We tell you once again, the people of Garrett, my, my relatively organized street, uh, had rave reviews.
Oh, that's good to hear. Yeah.
Again, they, they would let me know otherwise.
Sure.
Yeah, so. Uh.
Yeah, and I heard from quite a few residents afterwards who just sent me an email.
Yep.
And, you know, makes you feel good. Yeah.
To the other, the other, just big point on the, um, on the block party thing. Um, it would, it would be great in terms of Savvy Citizen to, to notify that. I'm not saying that the block parties themselves like that part, I don't know that, that is or isn't appropriate. But just on the street closure space.
Right.
I think it's, it's something exactly from borough space.
Yeah.
To have communication with folks.
Mm-hmm.
Just so people know, don't come, you know, even if you go past the, the one horse, right? You're going to go down there, you know, when you're going to visit a friend, you know, you don't come barreling down, you know, when you've got.
Right.
Forty kids running around on the street.
And Jay, we did discuss that, um, at our, the last time we met is for road closure purposes is to let people know, uh, via Savvy Citizen. So yeah, that is something that, that we did discuss and we're going to discuss further at our next meeting in two weeks.
Thank you.
We were considering closing Moon Lane. Then we looked at what problems that would create.
It would create a lot of problems.
So yeah, the decision was made.
Mm-hmm.
And had a police car at the top of the hill, the lights flashing.
Yeah. And I, and I appreciate you making that decision because you know that would have made my life particularly difficult. So.
For you, Jay. Sure. The parking, I think, was the big issue, having to walk up the street and on that. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm going to really thank.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
Station. He did a great job.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else on communication? Uh, we've got climate action and mayor. See, I'm not going to skip. See, I knew when I, I skipped it out. The mayor was like, wait a second, you know, we don't know about that, that, that's for sure. But Adam, uh, floor, anything?
Uh, yeah. So climate action has not met since, uh, our last meeting where we adopted the, um, the, the waste management ordinance in, in September. So climate action will be, uh, reconvening sometime in October. Now we'll have a further update next month.
Thank you, sir. So anything else? Anybody else on, I think we've done, right?
Uh, yeah.
No.
Climate action. Alex sent out that, uh, 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 mail this morning, and I did jump, Diane jumped on that. It's a summit. It's a three or four days long. Uh, so they started at nine o'clock, ran all day long. I couldn't sit, you know, the whole time for every, you know, hour of it. But what I did hear was really a lot of good information that they're putting out about what's going on on our planet. Like locally, globally, everything. So there's a lot, but, and they are taping it.
Yeah, certainly. Today from eleven till maybe, or maybe ten to eleven, they have the local governments that climate action plans and what they were doing from across the, the Commonwealth. So, um, if you can make any of it this week, it's worth it. The, the state governor Wolf is really pushing hard. They have a an office of sustainability that they're, this is their first ever statewide sustainability summit. And it's amazing just even today what they have from Penn State, the university and what other, the Green Building Alliance, um, just all the things that were going on. So, um, electric cars, all the things we talked about and have been our committee are, are really going to be covered sometimes. So stay tuned for either you can attend part of it or the, the, the taping of them over the next few weeks. Um, I was really impressed with what lineup they have. And you can run it in the background. You don't have to like be answering questions or you know, uh, tune in when you can.
We're surprised.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. And no, my comments were, I just wanted to bring out, you know, to balance again, you know, we mentioned a little earlier last meeting or so about the deer control. I'd like to see if we couldn't get between the, uh, the, you know, the surrounding boroughs, Wilkins, Forest Hills, Penn Hills even. A group meeting together, you know, how can we control our deer, uh, population in our area? You know, not just on your street, my street, uh, seventeen deer standing on the street. That's a lot of deer.
Yeah.
You know, so we, hopefully we can get together. I know I had some conversation with Patty DeMarco and she's on board. We'd like to get together with the boroughs and see if we can come up with a plan where, you know, the cost, the burden just wouldn't be on us. Because we said before, these aren't Churchill deer. They're not paying taxes.
We got some Churchill deer. I'll tell you.
During open forum, I was just going to mention, actually, if you go on the Forest Hills, you know, Forest Hills website, they're actually doing, um, uh, a survey right now on deer, you know, like they're asking their, their residents to take a survey about the deer. Uh, so now's a good opportune time, it sounds like. And then I just wanted to mention again, you know, our speed signs, those electronic speed signs. Still a lot of conversations I'm seeing on the Nextdoor app, but that's what, anyway, Queensburg Pike, we all know, it's racetrack. Something to do up there. And Gior, that seems to be.
Those, those are the two toughest places for us to do a lot about for us.
Yeah.
Um, but again, let me, let me reach back out. I, I, I reached out once before and I kind of fell off. So I need to, I need to reach back out to Jay and to.
We get those electronic signs. We can't have an officer out there, you know, patrolling all day. But the sign, I'm not sure if the sign, if anything works. But I think if you had that sign that flashes.
I think a sign works. I know I slow down when I see my speed. Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Yeah. So we can look at that. Um, I did want to mention about the, uh, uh, you talked about the, um, community day. I'll mention on, on Saturday, October eighth, down on our green space, they're having an activity down there. They're going to be planting trees and doing some other things. So if you're available anytime on Saturday, I think I shot, I asked maybe, um, Michelle, she could shoot it out on Savvy Citizen as well. If you're available on Saturday, Saturday morning, can't remember the time. Maybe ten o'clock or something till two, twoish, they'll be planting some trees down there. And then just one other thing, other people are listening on, on a meeting tonight. There was a comment made on the Nextdoor about the volunteer fire department. And the resident was shocked to find out that a third of our residents contribute to the volunteer fire department. You know, it's something we know, all of us know, this is a really important thing to our community. So if we could, and there's not much we could do but other than just let people know. When the time comes, when they're looking for donations, we step up to play. I talked to some other people and they said, actually, I think Forest Hills was telling me they have a fire fee.
Yeah.
You know, you just, you pay a fee yearly. They're not going to ask you for a donation.
I know. Okay.
And I know, just thank everybody, you know, working on the budget. I seen that, Michelle, Alex, the finance committee, um, the different options that are available. I know, I know it's a tough decision to come up with. You know, a final budget with or without increases in keeping the services we have. And I, you know, kind of keep an eye on that. Thank you, everybody.
That is the key, right? Yeah. Find a way to continue the services in a way that doesn't, uh, doesn't impact our residents negatively. Uh, and it's a, it's a dance for, for residents to understand too.
Sure.
If you want all the services, all the way that we're accustomed to, it is hard to maintain that year in, year out without kind of full of cost of living, right? Uh, so we'll, we'll see, we'll see where we can take it. You, you're talking about the conversation of development and you're not getting the development that you want. Right? And I don't care which development that is, uh, just the idea of getting development. Uh, you know, that makes it even more difficult
Yeah.
to maintain kind of the, the mileage where it is and maintain services, right? So it's, it's a constant kind of tug of war. Uh, you know, I'd love to be in a situation where, you know, I can say, let's get more services for everybody without a problem, without costs, you know? Um, but that is not necessarily where we are, you know? I think we're in a good space right now. I think it, I think the upcoming, we start looking at the budget, I think it will reflect that we're not in a bad space, you know? But, uh, not necessarily in the, you know, the best space we, we can be. So we'll see where, where we are and hopefully, you know, next year's budget, maybe we have some development. After that, maybe, I don't know. So we shall see. Um, anything else here?
I should just mention, I was at the, uh, an event last week and our tree committee was invited to make presentation to the legal and voters. Uh, and some of the presentation that was made in the past was updated. And, uh, that's something for the climate committee. Uh, but, uh, very well received and clearly came from Churchill's activity. So this was a, this was a meeting of the entire legal and voters.
So this was a, this was a meeting of the entire legal and voters. So it was nice PR for us.
Yeah. Ken did a good job.
Yes, he did.
I, I would not doubt that for a second.
Did you like his shirt at community day?
Yeah.
His tree committee shirt?
Yes, yes.
It didn't say Ken Dot on the back. But he did have tree committee and he was showing everybody.
Yes.
Had a shirt on.
Yes. It's a funny tissue.
Thank the tree.
Yes.
Time you dream, thank the tree.
Okay. I would also put every time I breathe out, the tree thinks of it. Yeah, mutual, mutual relationship.
To my eye.
Exactly.
Uh, if there isn't anything else, uh, prior to adjourning, I just announced that we're going to head into the executive committee to deal both with the legal issue and personnel issue. Um, and then after that, we will, we'll get to that. Yeah. All right, um, at this time then, let's adjourn the workshop and we will head into executive session. Thank you all, Tom.